Yes.
Everybody here, Betty?
We're missing one of our members, but...
A member due to come in? Who knows? All right. Well, it's nine o'clock. We'll start. We'll call the meeting to order. This is a joint meeting of the Town Council and Borcab, affectionately known as Borcab, Bay Oaks Recreational Advisory Board. It's not on the agenda, but let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't we, before... I'm going to make a couple of comments and then let Betty make a few comments. Before we get underway, why don't we just go around the horn? And everybody say their name for the record, and then we'll know everybody who's here. We'll start with you, Barbara.
Barbara Hill, Vice Chair of Borcab. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Holly Sweeten.
Eddie Simpson.
Lee Malsick.
Erin Woodson.
Jenna Holmes.
Ann Ayers.
Rexanne Haas for us.
Ray Murphy.
Jim Anderhold.
Bill Leach.
Hey, very good. Welcome, everyone. Happy New Year to everybody to be back in Town Hall. Before we get underway here, I just want to... I want to thank all you members of Borcab for your service to the town. We rely on our committees for good information. And I know you've been working hard on this plan here for some time now. And I think I can speak for the council when I say thank you very much for your efforts. Keep up the good work. That being said, there was a little bit of confusion earlier on here, from what I gather, as far as budgets and plans and so on. And if there was any confusion, I'll apologize for the town. We're sorry if there was any confusion. But we're not going to litigate that or re-litigate it. We're just going to move on. We're going to move forward. With that being said, again, we have a... We have this project that's underway. We have a budget. There's been discussion about more money and so forth and so on. But I want to comment. I mean, I've sat on a lot of these town charrettes, as Betty has, over the years and different ones. And that standard operating procedure for the consultants who's ever... These planning sessions is to think big. That's always the way. And your... And the admonition is always, "Think big as if there's no budget. Just give us all your ideas. Forget about costs and everything else." And that's great. That's a great way to plan. Because what that does is it fleshes out all the good ideas, gets them all on paper. Then we move forward from there, deciding on what the priorities are and what we can do within our budgets, within our means at the time. And that's what you did. You're to be congratulated for that. Because that's the whole idea of these exercises. We thank you for that. Now, there was questions about additional funds and so forth and so on. And that's entirely possible, that additional funds can be found. Whether it's going to be robbing Peter to pay Paul or one of these sort of circumstances, I'm not sure. But certainly, we're going to be eligible for various grants and so forth. And we want to do that soon. And we want to get into this cycle here that's coming up for these grants. In order to do that, we have to be underway. We have to get going on this project. So we're going to do that. Hopefully, we're going to come to some consensus today and move forward from there. So again, on behalf of the town and the council, thank you for your service to the town. And we'll have a good discussion this morning. Eddie Simpson, the chairperson for Borcab.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you, Mayor Ray and Vice Mayor Rexanne, our council members Dan, Jim, and Jill. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to meet and review our Bay Oaks plan. Let's communicate with one another this morning. We've had enough lack of communication, poor publicity. And so now it's time for us to get on. Our original goal was to meet the community needs, the true community center, taking advantage of the entire Bay Oaks recreational campus. A beautiful, large piece of property that we have. Concerned, people continued to ask, "Where is it?" And a piece of property on the boulevard came available and with it the opportunity to showcase Bay Oaks. This is where we are today. We're trying to get on that same page. As you, our Town Council, give us a job. We feel we have done our job in making recommendations to you. However, those were very ambitious recommendations. As our mayor has just indicated, we've now discovered all of those recommendations that we recommended may not be fiscally feasible. Here's where we stand. You'd like two buildings, an athletic center with a new gym, a well-equipped, large weight room for fitness classes, spin, Pilates, et cetera, to help maintain good health, and a community center for more passive, low-impact and recreational activities with multipurpose uses, with emphasis on youth and senior needs. We've lost some of those senior needs. Calling that, and I'm taking that from a former council member, Joanne Champ, we need a community gathering center, local events, meetings. Our current facility does not meet those needs. So this is an opportunity and one that our community certainly needs. Let's negotiate and take advantage of this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to work together for our island. Thank you for giving us this challenge to Borcab. Together, we can make this happen. I do want to mention to you, and I don't want any of you to think that I'm rude or upset about anything, but at 9:45 this morning, you'll see me getting smaller as I leave. I have a 10/20 COVID-19 vaccine for this morning, and I am thrilled.
To you, Betty.
So that will be me as I get smaller leaving. Okay. I'd like to turn it over to any of our other committee members at this time or any comments that you might have.
We adopted a series of, I believe it was four questions, were sent on to you, the council.
I think...
And I'm not... I'm confused as to whether we're going to discuss those today.
You know what? We're just going to see where this discussion goes, Lee. We'll take it step by step and see...
Those questions do that. I mean, those questions, I think, are very significant to where we're going and are designed to help us know where we're going.
Any other comments?
I think, you know, we're largely on the same page. I know that everybody's, both council and staff and Borcab members, agree that we are looking to improve what we have as a facility at Bay Oaks. I think the disconnect really had to do with the issue of being able to phase that first conceptual plan that we approved last August that was presented to council and talked about and having that phased over time, depending on when the funding was available. Then in October, that phasing was no longer an option. So I guess today I'm looking... I personally am looking for some kind of agreement as to whether phasing is acceptable to council, if that's something we can think about. We could look at the overall plan for amount of funding that will be available, not only for this, you know, 5.5 million, which is the number that is, you know, discussed, but for the overall plan that could be up to 15 million. So I guess what I'm looking for is that consensus to say, "We don't have to do everything right away, but we would like to be able to do that overall plan with a separate amphitheater, with the athletic center and the community gathering place." And, you know, if we were to have to make concessions right now, I think we all agreed that the welcome center could be something that we could eliminate for now. That wasn't an essential need. It was lovely, but it wasn't essential. And the fact that there was artificial turf that was recommended, we recognize that's hugely expensive. So I think we are willing to take that off the table. And we also looked that perhaps there were some funds that could be available. So given all of that new information about our willingness to compromise to a certain extent, and the council willing to bring additional dollars into this first phase and allowing a second, possibly third, phase to happen, I think we could go a long way in making this morning's conversation very productive.
Thanks, Barbara. Who else?
I feel like, I mean, the questions... That's why we're here, to discuss those things, so we can move forward. Because without knowing... I guess I'm not trying to rehash the past, but that was the issue. We don't know if we don't have a clear amount to spend or we won't know what to take away, what we can keep. You know, there's some basic issues that need to be brought to light before, or else we're just going to go in circles.
I have a very strong suspicion that that's going to be discussed here.
Okay. Well, that's what was at, you know, the questions that were submitted, you know?
Yes.
That was the question. So... And I feel like, you know, I joined this committee after a lot of it was already in the works. And I just came in and was kind of shocked, you know? Just the first two meetings, like, okay. You know, the plan that was worked on was just completely different, you know? And that's why we're moving forward now. I think it's important to have things in the light and to talk about... I'm the type of person, like, "Let's get a solution. Let's move forward." So where do we go from here? What's the next step? We need to know, you know, cost so that we can get moving forward. So we're not just rehashing this over and over again.
Exactly. Ladies?
Yes, I mean, you've mentioned, Ray, that there could be additional funds that were found, that can be found. You mentioned grants and need to start working on that. And I was also wondering where we could be with our own fundraising and naming rights and that type of thing, going through the Friends of Bay Oaks, because obviously we can't do it, but going through the Friends of Bay Oaks and doing additional grant writings and additional fundraising to help offset what the cost might be to the town, what the cost could be to the citizens. I know that the Friends of Bay Oaks right now is inactive. But I'm hoping, you know, one of my passions would be to resurrect that, see if we couldn't get more people involved and really do a total, well-rounded fundraising effort for this once we get buy-in on what direction we're going to go.
They're inactive. They gave us a check today for 18 grand.
Because they're inactive.
Is that leftover?
Oh, it's because of inactive.
Okay, 18 to 5 and a half one.
Well, I'm just saying. I wasn't aware of that. But, okay, well, that... I mean, those are all possibilities. I don't... I mean, I wouldn't turn down any funding sources, you know? But so everything... Everything can be on the table within our legal boundaries. But ladies, did you have any comments?
I do. I'm just encouraged that we're talking about it. I know that the budget is not what we had hoped for, but that was a pie in the sky. So I think we just want to resonate what she said about funding and need to just really strongly move ahead on this program. And that's all I have to say.
I agree with those comments and it's... I think the main thing is, Barbara, in response to your question about phasing, I mean, it would have to be phased over time, you know? And hopefully, we can agree on some elements that would come in future phases that everybody reaches consensus on. Then again, five of us aren't going to be here necessarily in these future phases. So you... And several of you all won't be here when it comes time for future phases. You can't really lock in a sitting council to these future phases. But once you get the project going, I mean, and it creates momentum... Don't get me wrong. I'm all for moving forward with this. But we have to start. We have to start. And that's the main thing that I think...
Ray, may I say something? See, there's that argument again. And it seems to me we're almost starting off here with a false argument. Actually, you can do phases, commit future councils, and you already have. You've borrowed $10 million. You've committed future councils' budgets. You've got street work going on out there that was approved by two or three councils ago that you're responsible for. I don't know where this argument came from, that you can't do phases, can't commit future...
I didn't say we couldn't.
You did.
I just said it would have to be phased. Do you hear me?
You said you can't commit future councils. You already have. And they've done it ever since the town has been created. I mean, that's a false argument that we shouldn't be considering in this discussion.
Lee, I have to disagree with you about we cannot bind future councils. There was a council who sat here who almost stopped the Stormwater Project mid-phase.
But they couldn't.
Yes, they almost did. They almost voted...
The money was there.
We borrow money in phases. We can stop borrowing at any time. A future council could, and that's one thing I want everybody to understand. I'm in favor of phasing, but I want everybody to understand that a future council could stop the project in its tracks. And that's something you need to think about when you're electing future council people, et cetera.
Yeah, when you're considering electing future council people. It's done all... It's been done since the beginning of this town, Rexanne. One council passes on to future councils budgets, restrictions, budget, money borrowed. It happens all the time. You've passed on to future councils $10 million that they have to pay off.
We have not yet borrowed that...
That can't change. The bank's not going to let future councils change that.
We have not yet borrowed that money. We're going to borrow it in pieces. We have not borrowed that money yet.
Okay. You have three years left of this council. Surely, we can get a lot done in three years in phasing. Which, this council, three years, phasing. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about the money we can raise. Let's talk about doing this plan instead of finding excuses why we can't. This is a good plan. The people of Fort Myers Beach deserve this plan.
No one's finding excuses not to do the plan. No one's doing that.
Oh, I think so.
No, you're telling us that, Lee. Now, we'll bring it back to the council. Dan, you want to start us off here? Well, first of all, before we get underway here, I'm just going to ask my fellow council members, if we agree that the number we're working with right now is $5.5 million, is that the number we're working with at the present time? If it's not, tell me, and we'll work with something else. Is that our budget, what we have now?
That's my understanding, yes.
That's your understanding? Jim?
It is my understanding, but it's been a little bit obfuscated by the fact that we've found an additional $1 million in reserve funds for the Times Square project, which could, assuming the will of the council is such, be applied to this particular project. And I don't think we formally have had a debate about that. But in fairness to you, Mr. Mayor, that was certainly the number that was put forward, 5.5 million.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to mention that the proposed project that's out there as of right now, the 30%, is still far over that $5.5 million. The money that's brought up in some of these questions, you know, I feel it's best if we just go through one through nine, question by question. And some of these questions will come up as we go along, so we're not bouncing back and forth. But to speak on that, I think that people are forgetting that this current plan that you see at the 30% is already well over the $5.5 million. We're not talking about cutting things away. We're talking about trying to get started what is actually presented today. It would be my recommendation that we go through the questions that they put time and effort into to ask us specifically, one through nine. And as questions arise, we can answer them then.
No, we can do that. If we're agreeing as a council that the number is 5.5, then that's where the focus should be. But can we get going in this project now for $5.5 million?
And just to also clarify something that Jim said. We did have a discussion about when we first were talking at a council meeting, and this is when you were not around for, Ray, about the $1.5 million that's being pulled out of the loan. It suggested that money was...
Sorry, Bill, I didn't hear that.
About the $1.5 million that was being pulled out of the loan because of the issue with us renting out that space and getting income from it that didn't qualify for the loan. And we... The question was asked when Rexanne was sitting in for you, that, "Does that mean we have more money now for the projects, which is more money alone?" And I thought it was consensus at that meeting to say that, "No, we're still a $10 million project for all."
You know, it wouldn't be fair to the other projects to start throwing money off of those yet until those plans are solidified. So now, they've been scaled back already in our discussions, and it's conceivable that something could become available. But you can't guarantee that just yet. Anyhow, that being said...
Can I say one thing?
I just wanted to... You may, for further clarification, I think this is trying to be helpful. We originally had a $10 million loan document before us, and because of some issues with the loan requirements, we had to find an additional $1 million, deal with the Times Square improvement project. Roger found an additional $1 million from our reserves, which you could look at it two ways. You can say, "That means we only need to borrow $9 million because the Times Square project has now been reduced by a million because we've added $1 million in reserve funds." Or you could say, "We still have a line of credit to borrow $10 million with the additional $1 million from the town reserve." So it's just whatever the will of the council is. We now have some flexibility should we choose to add an additional $1 million to the pot if that's the will of the council. I think that's all we're discussing. That came up while you were unable to attend the meeting where we were discussing the $10 million loan. I think that's where part of the confusion is. I think it was just $1 million, not 1.5, correct me if I'm wrong, Roger. But I think that was one of the dynamics that's in play here today.
There's a third option, councilman. You can direct that $1 million to Bay Oaks. It's a third option.
Talking about, yeah.
But you said either go to $9 million or direct that million back to the reserves. You can also direct it to Bay Oaks.
That's what I meant, Lee. I meant to say we could direct it to Bay Oaks, yeah.
So can I say something?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The phases, the reason it's kind of important is, and we want to get started right away, but, you know, the plan that Roger showed us doesn't allow for a lot of the phases that we want. And I know we're not even dealing with that plan right now. But we do have to consider with the budget and everything, if we're going to put this thing here in a few years when we want to expand the phase, are we going to be able to do that? So the phases are, you know, rather important to... Yeah, to starting, because we can't just start and then have the amphitheater thrown on the back of the building when we want it to be standing, you know? So it is important. It's, you know, we can say, "Let's just get started and start this." But we have to, you know, there's other aspects to look at. And, you know, of course, I understand there's a budget. There's a budget for everything. You know, the thing was, we want it to be worked with before it was just cut down to this small, little, you know, small project that we want it to, you know, have it different. So, you know, a lot of things need to be considered before we can just say, "Oh, we're just going to start." The phases, that's why it's brought up. It's not being brought up just to have another issue brought up. It actually goes with the whole thing.
And Holly, just point to that, because you understand, though, the risk of, is you say, "We're going to build it this way so we can have future expansion." And if part of the future expansion is this amphitheater, you may never get the amphitheater.
Okay.
Or you're going to delay it for a very long time.
And that's with everything. I understand that. There's always a risk to everything. I mean, we can talk about the negatives all day. We can live in reality. This is reality. And we can say, you know, we can go to the negative or we can go to the positive. They're both equal.
And I think...
So saying that there's room, maybe, you know, we can do, like it said, raise more money, you know? Maybe it'll be used more. Maybe people will see, "Oh, wow, this is..."
Before we get too caught up in the phasing debate, I think even the plan that Roger put forward, the most recent plan, that's a phased plan.
It doesn't allow for a lot of the things we want to do.
No, I appreciate that. But that's concept of whether we can do phasing or not. The plan that the town put forward is a phased plan because it doesn't touch the exercise facility. It leaves that for a later day.
But it left out a lot of things that we wanted.
No, no, no. You're missing my point. My point is, is that the plan that was recently put forward is a phased plan. So the concept of phasing is absolutely possible. And I think everybody acknowledges that. So I think there's really no need to debate that at this point. Now, how we phase it is the big question. That gets the question you're raising, and that's a fair point. But I think we can get past this, whether we can phase or not. It is fair to say that we can't bind future councils, but that's no reason not to move forward and do phasing. It's just something to be aware of as we think about how to prioritize our phasing.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, Lee. I didn't finish. Are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Chairman Simpson, I want to ask you a question. Do you have a list of priorities that you'd like to begin? If you had this $5 million today, what would your list of priorities be to start this project? Is there such a list the council can consider?
It's our original plan.
Give you a few minutes to think about it, Betty, if you want.
Yeah.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know what I'm saying?
Exactly. And I just think that it's important for us to keep this communication going. And we aren't all going to agree on everything, and we don't have to. But we need to try to move forward by getting that first step. And I think that, as a committee, we were convinced that we had a great plan. And I think it goes without saying that we did. However, it was pretty ambitious. And all those ambitions cost money. And I think that we're well aware of that. For us to be able to have that original plan, and of course, this kind of goes back to what we were told in the very beginning. It was my understanding that we were going to be able to build a building for a million, maybe 2 million. We were not aware of all the other things that are going to go into that. And so we felt pretty comfortable in saying that we wanted two buildings. That was really important to us. Whether we could have was a little smaller... Whether we could have those a little smaller, it's hard to say. I mean, that's, those are all things that, questions that we also had. Then when that other plan came up, I think that we were a little brokenhearted. I mean, what happened to all of our ideas? And so, but that's kind of water under the bridge right at this point. I just think it's so important for us to be able to try to get on one page, we can work together. We've come a long way, as the old saying goes, and I don't want us to lose that momentum. We can possibly work together and talk about the things that are really important. So-
It's 9:30, we've got another half an hour of this meeting.
Right.
What I'm looking for is for your priorities that you would want to get going on this project, to present to the council, then the council can hash all that out and decide which way they want to go. That's what I'm looking for.
Right.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
That is trying to get you-
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay, I was letting you finish. I believe that part of the reason that it's difficult to come up with that list is not knowing what the cost for the various items might be. We know we're working with five and a half million, and we know that this is X dollars, this is X, this is X, and we know which ones that we can maybe give and take from, or which we can decide which ones are more important to us as a group, because we would know which ones we can actually accomplish. Right now, we may like this, you know, these three items or four items or what have you, but if only one of those would fit into the budget, then it's moot.
Well, I think we're gonna have a hard time costing out the job here today at this meeting, but again, I'll say it again, if we have the list of what you deem is most important first, and we can see if it works within this budget, why then, council will consider that, and if they're in agreement, then we'll proceed that way.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, maybe I can help shed a little bit of light on this. I have been involved in this since the very beginning, and if we all remember, how it started was, just had ideas out there of what we'd like to see incorporated into the Bay Oaks, what wasn't being accomplished, what we'd like to see accomplished based on information that we received from the public and as well as Board, Cab, and council. All that was thrown into a pot, and I think none of us expected it to get as far as it's gotten right now. So I think that's great. But at the very beginning, everybody had ideas of what they'd like to see with passive, you know, recreation, a fitness trail, things like that. Allison and her team took all that information, put it into the pot, understood the budget that we had given them, tried to give them as many things that were on that list as possible, be able to make it work for everyone. I think we all agree that building what we'd love to see would be great, but it's gonna take money. The current plan does have phaseability, I think it's pretty clear everybody's in favor of doing that. My question would be, not so much is what's most important, as to, of the plan that's proposed right now, what services do you feel are not being provided in the original list that we discussed three years ago and two years ago? My opinion, I think Allison and her team have done a very good job of taking what we gave them, trying to fit it within a very small budget. Now, there's still things that are not included in there, and I would like to know from the committee what you feel is not being incorporated into what Allison feels is servicing the most top priorities that were given to her and her staff.
Well, I understand what you and Ray are asking for, okay? And regarding Councilman Aderholz's discussion on the building, it was, it's, we've already made, I think we've already essentially given you priorities. We gave you a unanimous vote of this committee that it was our opinion, it's the wrong building. We begin now with talking about the wrong building. That building is inadequate. That building is inadequate for the future. It's nowhere, it's nothing even near what we had planned. It's not the kind of building that's gonna attract people. I believe Mr. Veach, Councilman Veach talked at the last council meeting about how we don't get much turnout at Bay Oaks. There's a good reason for that, you're not giving them much in the way of facilities. We're trying to give them facilities, and it's the, and we've said, and we've voted unanimously a couple of times, that's the wrong building, Councilman. But right at the beginning here, right at the start, we have a problem. We have a problem between what your advisory board gave you and what's been given to you, and you obviously are considering going with now. It's the wrong building.
Again, I'll raise the question, what in this 13,000 or 14,000 square foot building and the existing gymnasium is not falling within what the committee would like to see as far as recreational facilities that would attract more people?
Something a lot nicer than the building that's been presented to the council.
Things, and I hear some disagreement on council, so I just want clarification. Is council actually saying that it is possible to phase this project? I need to get some confirmation about that.
I would say it's possible.
I think we agree.
It's possible, so Rexanne disagrees.
No, no.
Now she just said she agrees.
I said, I agree that phasing is possible, but I wanted to strongly warn everybody of the things that were said earlier. If you phase it, eventually a future town council may say, no, we're not building your amphitheater. If you put that in a phase down the road, you're gambling, is all, I just want to strongly warn you that. I'm in favor of phasing the project.
Okay, okay.
I'll just say quickly, too, that I don't think that means that we open up the pocketbook, because I heard Betty say that they want two buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Two separate buildings is more expensive than one building that's larger, that's also harder to staff, you've got two entrances. So, that's something you may want, but if that is a very expensive option, is it something you still want? The thing, I think, with the amphitheater, and that, if you could have an amphitheater now that's attached to the building, and if you looked at the latest designs, these are not the same we got at our last meeting, they've certainly developed what the amphitheater would look like more on the building. That is, it's much less expensive, my understanding, to build it on the side of a structure, plus you can leverage the facilities that are there. So, it's a way to get most of what you want for less money, and those are the kind of compromises, I think, that really have to be made to bring, to get, like Dan's been pointing out, the services we want, for the most economical way possible.
And I hear what you're saying. I understand the consolidated plan, for all practical purposes, for that budget, makes sense on that utilitarian level. But to Lee's point, you know, is it inviting? Is it really serving our needs? In my opinion, that athletic center and that community building will house very different activities, which we want, and it's not just for kids and adults, it's because the kids will use community building, and the adults will use the athletic center. So, it's not a question of putting one in one wing and one in the other in this consolidated plan. So, if phasing is possible, which sounds really great, I'm all for that, the question is, do we go with what we all, what DRMP originally designed for the, eliminating the welcome center, for example, talking about priorities, and keeping these two buildings, the separate community center gathering place and the athletic center, and having the separate amphitheater, which was another thing we voted on unanimously as a recommendation to you all. So, and again, I think the kids, didn't they want the separate ball fields? And that was something that the kids wanted, and that's not the case in this consolidated plan. So, my priority would be to do the community center as a separate building, the athletic center as a separate building, and have the amphitheater as a separate building, and the rest of it can actually go, like the fitness trail, I'm sure, would fit into the 5.5 million, as we've all discussed. So, we're not really talking so much about the, you know, the parking or the ancillary amenities, like the clay tennis court, which we know is a very important part for our community to be able to provide. This plan in phases is what we want. Now, the consolidated plan, which is what you were presented with last October, does not allow for the kind of phasing this one does. If you can look at this as a overall concept plan, and I thought DRMP did an incredibly beautiful job in taking all of the things that we wanted and putting that in a very attractive plan that services everybody's needs. My fear is that this plan, this consolidated plan, actually does not provide us with what we want, not now and not later. It doesn't allow for the kind of separate amphitheater as integrated, that will actually then be an afterthought, and it's, this just doesn't allow for phasing as much as this does. The conversation in August was that, yes, these could be phased in, which this plan could do, then the idea of phasing then sort of dropped off of the conversation. So, now that I know that that's back on, I would like to go back to the separate buildings. And I hear what Bill's saying, it is obviously more expensive. If there's a way that we could, you know, make it less so, there are curved buildings here, I saw, and again, that's a concept plan based on how beautiful it is, you know, if money were no object, I'd like for all of that to be developed just as the architect has designed. But if there are some cost efficiencies that we're dealing with, and that allows for two separate buildings and a more-
We can change the welcome.
What was that? Anyway, that allows for, you know, cost efficiencies, and I'm happy to revisit the cost of the building. So, that's just my thought.
Barbara, if I may, Mr. Mayor. The plan that, the latest plan that they have out there does leave room for expansion. I believe it's the north side of the building is-
We haven't seen.
Is constructed, well, no one has seen it, because it hasn't been developed yet, but the building is being designed so that expansion to that building, to add a second building, can happen in a different phase. And then there was talk about a third potential phase of redoing the gym. So, the phasing has always been talked about, and I think we're all in agreeance, that phasing can happen. Again, I keep going back to, I would like to hear from the committee, but in this current plan, whether it's designed the way or built the way it is now or a little bit different later, what's not being covered as far as services that the community and the committee feel are needed? And that could be a discussion, then, that we can have, as to, do we have to increase the size of the building? Do we have to separate it into two buildings? That's kind of where I'm stuck at.
Well, I think, getting back to the idea of the separate ball fields, that was a priority for the kids, and if that's what our community wants, that's what we should be getting. The other thing is, we don't want a second-rate amphitheater, we want a first-rate amphitheater. And so, you know, that, this consolidated plan does not provide for the optimum placement of a separate amphitheater. It was always designed with the idea that the amphitheater would be somehow attached, which I think is short-sighted.
And I can understand that, and I was one that was very vocal about having an amphitheater. I wasn't so much whether it was separate, I never really gave any thought about it being incorporated into an existing building. Now that I'm seeing some of the benefits that could come from it versus some of the things, you know, just money, the amount of money of building an external one or a standalone one versus one that could be very state-of-the-art attached to a building, gives a lot of money that could be put into potentially future phases, or adding more amenities or more services to what we already have that we're talking about doing. So I'm trying to look at it from both spectrums. I understand it would be perfect to build this entire facility the way that you guys put it, dude, it's a great design, I'm not gonna argue that, but we're also stuck with other things that we have to deal with that are going on in the community that we have to be financially conservative about, and try to get as much of it as we can for everybody as much, you know, so that everybody can get a little bit of something. As the chairman mentioned, we don't want to go backwards, we don't want this to turn into another sterile lighting project that goes on for years and years and years and nothing happens. We want to see this move forward, and as you and I have spoken on the phone, and I've spoken with some of you on the phone about it, it's similar to Lover's Key. They started raising money, they started bringing the things out of the ground, and now people are getting behind it. So when people start to see progress, they start to get involved more, maybe the Friends of Bay Oaks comes back to life, and now more and more money comes in, and within three years, we can have what everybody wants. I think we have to keep focused on what we can get now and not go backwards and start all over. That's my biggest fear of this entire thing, is that we're gonna get stalled out, and we're gonna go backwards, and we're not gonna get anything.
Oh, Betty, Barb put forth a list of priorities for what's, how we're gathered here today. Is that the consensus of the rest of your board?
I would say yes.
Anybody else could agree with that?
Pretty much.
Nod heads?
Consensus.
Pretty much? Then you've done your job, your job, and we have to go forward from there.
Could I ask for, based upon what you just said and what Barbara said, could I ask for additional clarification of this? In your three phases, Barbara, would you prioritize 1, 2, 3 versus the active, passive versus amphitheater? How would you prioritize those within what you said earlier?
Everyone else's point about, and especially what Holly said about the idea that we have to excite the community about what this master plan provides, just like you saw when the entire Stere Boulevard was going to be planned. You have the excitement in the communities, oh my God, this is what it's going to look like when all of these phases are done, other than trying to put everything into one building. I don't personally like that consolidated building, because it's one huge institutional building that requires people to be both active and passive within the same building. I understand there are two sections, but there's that one central unit, which isn't exactly what we were hoping for. This was the disconnect. So, if we're going to be able to do phases, the idea of doing priorities, which, I mean, of course, we all want it tomorrow, let's face, let's build the community. I know that Lee Melsec, for example, really wants that community center gathering place, and I think that is something that's really lacking in our plan right now. We do have the gym, we can live with that for another couple of years, perhaps, and then that would be where the athletic center is, with the idea that if the community sees this community building, based on the original concept plan, built, and say, look, this is what we have been able to accomplish, and look what we're going to be able to do next, and next, we're gonna put the amphitheater in, we're gonna put top-quality sound and lighting systems in, so that concerts can be held on the ball fields, which are separate. Then, the community gets excited, the grants get written, the funding comes as a result of the Friends of the Arts, the Friends of the Bay Oaks. So, going back to the original concept plan, I think would be the best way, rather than this consolidated plan, which doesn't really accomplish any of the things that we all want.
Within the original concept plan, if you were to prioritize, you'd say the community center would come first?
I would.
And then the active, the amphitheater next, then the active piece of the community center's third?
Probably, I mean, I think the community center, the athletic center, and then the amphitheater third.
That's helpful, all right, thank you.
Have it phased.
What we don't want to do is just lob it together, you know, and then have it be a waste of money, because it's not even anything the community wants to go to or enjoy, you know? So I understand budget, and I understand getting things done, like, right away, but, no, that's why we're here, to talk about that, is we want to have something that this money is gonna go towards and be useful for the community, so.
Look, Betty.
Hi, Betty.
Thank you, all of you.
Sorry, go ahead, Rex.
I'd like to build on ideas that both Dan and Barbara have been talking about, about the building community excitement, which I think is very important, and one thing that I think I've mentioned before and would like to emphasize today, we bought that piece of property to open up from a Stere Boulevard some time ago, and that still hasn't occurred. I would love to see us make that the phase one, and let's get that open, let's decide what that's gonna look like, so that people do start going back there and seeing what's going on, because I think it will make a difference.
Absolutely, and we do have that plan integrated into that original concept plan, where that would be an entrance into Bay Oaks, that piece of property. And of course, that property is sort of what started the conversation, but I absolutely agree with you. agree with you. So...
That would be a logical place to start the whole thing.
Yeah, but we haven't mentioned that, so I just wanted to get it out there. I'd love to see us really move forward on that strongly.
I think though, you got to make sure that it doesn't, whatever you decide on and build there, doesn't contain you going forward with what you're going to do.
Understood.
Originally, I think in the plan, that entrance that you're referring to is a welcome center, and it would turn, it, original plan called for three buildings, and I think we've gotten away from the welcome center and just come into that administrative building, but all of it can be done as an open entry concept, so people know that it's there. So, we went from three to two, the administration and the athletic. But the whole idea was to open up from a Stere Boulevard to get in there, so people understood what was going on. And I think what also has happened too with this 30% plan, everything was like solidated in it, so fear of everything was made smaller. The athletic portion was made smaller, didn't even exist, really. The rooms were made smaller. Now, we wanted more of an open plan, like a bigger room, so that we don't outgrow it in another five to seven years, but that we can take that, and if we're still using the gym for the athletic, that's fine, there's still maybe five to seven years left in, you know, conceptually on that building. Not to squeeze everything in, to keep it open, to keep the square footage that we wanted, and then go on to Phase 2.
And a comment to that, Karen, I, I know, you know, somebody who's been to Bay Oaks and participating in some of the programs, I mean, that's what we have now with the gym, is an open, open plan. And when you're trying to do yoga and someone else is doing zumba...
Right.
It's, it's not very effective. I think that, and I'm just going to, just in a couple of points, I understand what you're saying, but there's a couple of efficiencies I think that we're really missing here, that I think that Allison's plan really addressed. And one is that having multiple buildings means you have multiple entrances, and you need staff to control all those entrances if they're going to be useful. There may, there, you, you, there, and you have a campus with buildings that are spread out, spread out around it instead of a central location. I look at the design that came, that this, this consolidated design, and there is, I see some efficiency with having one main building in the center of the campus. It's easier for the staff to manage a campus, and also, the thing that's missing with the smaller classes, you can do these things, you can have seniors doing something, and you can have kids somewhere in separate wings of the building, and allow them to be contained instead of having, say, the kids much having the entire gym to themselves and having the clothes tied off. I think that a lot of the, of the things that Dan talked about, a lot of the facilities and the, and the programs that you could have, that you don't have now, come from this building. I also think that it's important to, to look at this from a budgetary standpoint, saying just, I want A, B, and C. Having two buildings costs you half an amphitheater. You still want two buildings over one building. If, if having a standalone amphitheater means you can't have a community center, how do you pick that? And I, and I, and again, with, with Dan said, I've seen the idea with this design, that it can be expanded. I think that the existing gym has a lot more life to it than maybe some people are, are saying, because it's essentially cinder blocks. They have a new floor, you can put a roof on it. It's not like a car, which is getting miles on it, which is wearing out. It's still, as far as having a big volume of space, that's in air conditioning, for things like pickleball, I haven't seen any of these designs that replicate that space.
Well, actually, we spent a lot of time looking into all of that. We have very clear guidelines in terms of what function will be happening in what building. And I do recall staff saying that, you know, currently, we have a variety of town facilities under our Parks and Rec, and so there is the pool, for example, and then there's the gym, and then there's the cottages, Seven Seas cottages, which is also part of the Parks Department. And Allison doesn't really have a problem with how that all works, because, you know, we have, you know, the technological abilities now to be able to do a lot of work remotely. And so, we talked about the fact that that wasn't really necessarily going to be a deal breaker. Now, if you wanted to have one consolidated building, I would venture to say that this has to be totally redesigned, simply because it really would allow for a much larger, the fuselage, I believe is the, the word that Roger used, about, you know, having those two wings more separate than they currently are. And I guess I have a question with regard to this consolidated 30% plan. Where on this plan does it show that you can actually put a separate amphitheater? I don't see it. I don't see, if we do it as Phase 3, where that goes.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I would, and again, I would argue about the, the expense, and it's not just the expense of building a separate amphitheater, it's planning the entire system around a separate amphitheater. And you all voted that it's something you want, but when I look at this design, I look at the amount of money we're spending compared to the usage we're getting. I, well, number one, I appreciate that an amphitheater is one of the, probably one of the biggest things we're putting in here that can attract more visitors as a single entity. But I also see it as a potentially biggest white elephant, something you put a lot of money in, that it doesn't get the use to satisfy, and it's just there.
Barbara, I'm, I'm looking at this, the 30%, you know, you know the road that goes down between the two ball fields now, that goes back to the gymnasium. Can you just imagine that line there, by the, that small baseball field?
Where, where the tennis court, where the bocce courts are, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so to the left of that, is kind of where the dividing line is between where maybe a potential second or third phase would, would come into play. Oh, if you were to take off the amphitheater off the building, there's a lot of space in there to be able to facilitate another gymnasium, that ball field, and an outdoor amphitheater. I, I'm not so concerned with the space, I understand you're, you don't get to see it on here, but there's quite a bit of space here that could, could fit both of those in future phasing. And based on, and based on what you were saying with Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, how you'd maybe like to see things, I would urge you not to worry so much about the space, even though we can't see it physically drawn there. There's plenty of space to be able to add everything that would be included in those two other phases. So, I guess for me, I would like to know from the committee, as we go forward and discuss this, if eliminating the amphitheater from that building, and it frees up maybe a little bit of money that could go into other facilities and potentially other phases, is that something that the committee is willing to forego, in the hopes that future councils or future phases will include a standalone amphitheater?
What I would like to see, because obviously, this isn't, you know, track, it's not gaining traction with council, which is the original concept plan, or does this meet our needs as BorCAB members? Might there be an opportunity for DRMP to go back and say, I know we don't want to write, digress, but to go back and, to your point, say, all right, you know, let's look at a phased plan, but in the plan, show us, do the drawing that shows us, even in the 30% design phase, where that amphitheater will go. You know, where the, you know, the at, fitness center will go, where the athletic center will go. What will it look like when that gymnasium comes down? You know, and, and, you know, how will that be phased in? And so, redraw this plan, is my point, and incorporate all of the things that are on our list from this morning.
I think from the start, that's what we wanted, was not just take our plan and just, this. Let us be a part of it, be a part of the change. That was what we wanted from the start, and now we're backtracking, and we do have to sometimes hash things, because that's how you get, you move forward. So, we do have to, I mean, that, that's where the, so if you want to call it upset, came from, that the plan that was presented was just kind of taken, and there was no input from anybody.
Well, you know, there's a difference between rehashing and going over again and finger-pointing.
There's no finger-pointing going on.
There's been plenty of finger-pointing, and I've gotten emails about it, and, and letters and so forth, there's been plenty of it. And that's what I said at the beginning, we're not here to relitigate those matters. We're not here to litigate it. If we want to discuss these, these improvements and so forth, that's what we're here to do.
Yes, that's what we're saying, we'd like to be a part of it.
Mayor, I have a question. Oh, can I?
10 o'clock, we're going to wrap it up here.
Okay, as we move forward now, and to ask, I believe, your committee, advisory committee to move forward, there's a very significant question that's gone unanswered today. I'm going to take you back to it. It's my impression that we are now locked in to the 5.5 million. That's it. We were told by the town manager that it's mu, that it's somewhere between a million and a million and a half must come off of Times Square, a bank regulation or whatever. We're also told that there may be as much as a half a million, maybe less, come out of Bayside. We were told this. So, there's a million two, a million three, plus another, let's say, three, there's almost $2 million there, but won't, may not be used on these other two projects. The question is, will this council, we need, I think, to go forward, your committee needs to know this, what are we, how much money are we dealing with? Will you put that money to Bay Oaks? Do you put the money that can't or won't be used at the other two projects to the Bay Oaks project, increasing its, increasing its budget when we get together again and look at the community center? That's the question that's out there, that I think we have to begin with.
You want to answer that?
I think we've talked about it before, and, and in my money, one thing about taking money from the reserves, putting it towards this project, to me, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with it. I'm a very frugal kind of guy, both in my personal life, and I like to see that in, in government too. Now, if grants come along, secure grants for things, then that, that definitely is something that just increases that budget, in my mind. But taking money from other projects to put it all towards Bay Oaks, which is already taking a lion's share of this budget, I'm uncomfortable with.
Who else?
Well, again, I go back to what I said at the beginning, that whether you like what's out there now or what's not out there now, it's still over the original budget of 5.5. But I want to assume that the money that could be left over from Times Square will go to that. I wouldn't be opposed to doing that. I want to see us get as much as we can out of that within the budget that we're already working within, the $10 million, however it could spread out, whatever needs what. There's also, as we've talked about, grants that could become available, that could add to that budget, Lee, that until we get going, we can't even apply for.
Okay, is the town going to actively and aggressively seek grants? We don't know that.
My understanding, with talking with staff, that, that, that is the plan.
Okay, this is how we know.
I've heard the same thing.
Well, there, it seems to me, there's a lot of things we don't know, Mayor, and we need to know. You're asking us to go forward, and that's very difficult for us, we don't know what we're dealing with. We don't know how much money we, we, we may have. Now, if we don't know when the, when the process for the grants is going to begin, there's a whole lot of questions here that, that we have a tough time with going forward. I do, anyway.
Well, you know today, you know today, you've got 5.5 million or whatever's left of that, you know that today, you know that. And then forward, going forward, if, if other funds become available that we can pluck, I would vote in favor of that, Leroy, I would vote in favor of that. So, if that happens, and, and the, I've been assured that the town is actively pursuing these grants and so forth. And, and as I stated earlier, nothing creates more excitement than a project that has started. And once the project starts, and, and these grant, grant, grantors see that there is a viable project, they're more inclined to grant. And, but it takes, it takes the activity to get going, to start the process. And that, and that's what I'm, that's what I would encourage, getting it, getting it going. It's now 10:05. I want to thank you all for this discussion this morning. And, Mr. Chair, do you want to put a final dot on the i here?
I would be happy to, and I want to thank all of the council members for being very diligent in terms of, you know, coming to a conclusion where we can move forward. I think we're definitely on the right path, maybe redesigning the 30% plan to allow for all of those things to happen, and then have all of that discussed as part of a phasing is, is definitely something. The idea that you were already looking for grant opportunities, but to your point, there actually can be nothing going until the project actually starts, to your point. So, I'm, I'm happy about that information, and I think we've had a very productive meeting today. And again, thank you all so much.
Thank you, thank you for all, again, please, thank you for all your work. If, if I, if I seem a little abrasive, it's just because every, every fight needs a referee, and that happens to be me. So, thank you again, and God bless all your work.
And I was going to say too, you know, don't, don't, don't confuse discussion and even disagreement with disrespect. I appreciate the time everyone's put into it, and keeping the lines of communication open.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second? For, uh, one favor? 10:06. Thank you.